To the town of Lakeville Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, September 9, 2025 at 6:04 PM. We are at the Lakeville Library tonight. Is anyone else recording this meeting besides Lake Cam? Could you introduce yourself?
My name is Sam Tucker. I'm a reporter with the Mass Street State meetings.
Thank you, Sam. All right. Let us call the Select Board to order. Numbers.
President.
Locka here.
Candido here.
Carbone here.
And now we will allow the Finance Committee to...
Yes, I'll call the Lakeville Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:04. Roll call.
Barbara Minkowski here.
Beals here.
Costin here.
Ryan here.
Tiney here.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Tonight, we're going to hear from Old Colony on the project presentation for the new high school. Our first person speaking today will be Shirley Burke. She is the Chair of the School Building Committee.
Hi.
There she is. So, everyone that wants to speak tonight will be standing up at the mini lectern. Thank you. Please proceed.
First apologies. We were attending a meeting in a cushionet. I only brought... Nobody caught me, so I think I'm okay. My name is Shirley Burke. I am a school committee member from the town of Rochester, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Old Colony School Building Project Committee. I'm here to just begin telling you about what we've gone through. It has been many months of, and a lot of hours, of important work, respectful work. But this is a journey, and we are not at the end of that journey. This is just a milestone in that journey. And the milestone is that we're coming before you. What I need to do in my role as Chair is to recognize the Lakeville representatives who have been on that committee, because the work that has been done has been very important and, obviously, very impactful. I recognize Chris Bonka, who came to us as a FinCon Chair and who is now seated as a Select Board Member. Brian Day, who was a former Select Board Member. Bob Marshall, who is here, who is an Old Colony School Committee Representative, and Deb Quinn, who resides in the town of Lakeville, who was a parent representative. The thoughtfulness and how everybody went through their efforts to bring us here today cannot be understated. So, I did need to recognize them. What you will hear today is a three-part presentation. Our Superintendent Director will be talking about why we're here. The firm, the architectural firm who has been assisting us, HMFH, will present how the, what the work that they have done is addressing those concerns. And then, PMA, our Project Manager, has the wonderful task of explaining the finances and how we may pay for that. But without any further ado, I do want to take the opportunity as well to thank the Select Board and the FinCon for the opportunity to make this presentation. We'll be back in Lakeville on multiple occasions, but this is the first start for us. So, with...
Thank you so much.
No, I'm not going to introduce Aaron. I am going to start with Walt Hartley, who is with PMA, our Project Managers.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Walter Hartley with PMA Consultants, the Owners Project Manager for the Regional School District of Old Colony for the school building project. Just want to give you guys a quick update before I have Aaron dive into the why of the project, but a quick review of the MSBA process. The MSBA invited Old Colony into the process a few years back after multiple statements of interest submitted by the district for their project. They went through the eligibility period and forming the team a little less than two years ago. And since that time where HMFH and PMA were brought on board, the district has worked through, and the building committee has worked through the Module Three, the feasibility study. And we just recently wrapped up Module Four, Schematic Design, with our submission to the MSBA on August 28. That will culminate at the MSBA Board of Directors Meeting on October 29, where we hope to get MSBA approval to move forward pending funding of the project. We are currently in Module Five, funding the project, bringing this information here to you, bringing this information to the general public, so that everyone can make an informed decision on November 18, the district-wide vote day. Following a successful vote, we have some slides later on in the presentation. We do have more submissions to the MSBA through Detailed Design, three submissions at that point in time, DD 60% construction documents and 90% construction documents, followed by a period of roughly two years of construction, and then close out with the MSBA. So, while it looks like we're nearly halfway through, there's quite a few years left in the process if successful. Kind of diving into that feasibility study, the MSBA has a very prescribed program. It's been very successful. I think a lot, everyone has seen schools around Lakeville go up. Very local would be Middleborough, Middleborough High School. But the process is similar for all core programs. The district is tasked with beginning a PDP. So, that starts with the district drafting an educational program and really writing down how the education is delivered at the school. And the way that that works is, that works through the Superintendent with his staff. It is about a 300, 400, 500-page document on how education is delivered at Old Colony. From there, PMA and HMFH assist the School Building Committee in determining the existing conditions of the building. All the engineers go through. They put costs on what it takes to repair the building. Educational vision takes place. Really, what culminates at the PDP is how many options and enrollments can Old Colony study. We ended up with around 42 options to really make sure that every stone was overturned, to make sure Old Colony was looking, and the district was looking, for the most educationally appropriate and feasible project that could satisfy that educational program. After that, the district looked at those 42 options, multiple sites, multiple enrollments, base repair, addition renovation, renovation and new construction. It was refined to get to the Preferred Schematic Report, the second submission. That was narrowed down to, I believe, six or seven options. And at the culmination of the Preferred Schematic, the district made its second submission to the MSBA, which was approved late in 2024, to move forward with enrollment of 776, addition of three programs, to move into schematic design. We just wrapped up the schematic design submission to the MSBA. We are waiting comments back. We'll reply to them as necessary. But this has really been the culmination of two years of work by the School Building Committee, with HMFH, with PMA, with the School Committee, with representation from the district and the five-member communities. And I will turn it over to Aaron for a little bit more about the why on the project.
Thank you, Walt. Just a quick overview of our why, and thank you again for the opportunity to present this information. We'd like to share that Old Colony is more than a school. We're a partner in service, a resource for workforce solutions, and a destination for our community members. Over the years, Old Colony and our students have supported our communities through projects such as building COA sheds in a cushionet in Rochester, work on COAs in a cushionet in Rochester, installing electric car charging stations for the town of a cushionet, reconstructing Loon Pond Lodge and enhancements at Ted Williams Camp and in the Lakeville Town Offices, renovating the American Legion Holy Ghost Grounds and Dunstith Parks in Mattapoisett, supporting the Plum Library and upcoming Rochester COA addition, construction of conference tables at fire stations in the majority of our member towns. Our cosmetology department is a fixture in all of our COAs, and our restaurant is a destination for our COAs and members of our community throughout. With the addition of plumbing and HVAC programs, Old Colony will function as a fully integrated construction workforce, providing even greater benefit for our towns and taxpayers. Our vision for a new school is to create a modern facility designed to integrate vocational and academic learning while empowering students with voice independence and exploration. Old Colony understands that the nature of this project is significant. We want everyone here to understand the state of Old Colony. We would like to provide an in-depth overview of our current structure and future plans, and we'd like to provide an overview and timeline as it pertains to the grant program. Most importantly, we'd like to answer questions pertaining to our vision moving forward to protect the investment of our five-member towns. Old Colony was opened in 1975. I was born in 1975. We both turned 50 years this year. And it's wonderful to celebrate a 50th anniversary. It's also important to think about what the next 50 years may look like. Currently, we're limited by our physical infrastructure. Many of our systems have surpassed their useful life, and our maintenance costs are increasing dramatically as a percentage of our operating budget due to those failing systems. Our building is relatively unchanged since the 1970s and does not meet the needs of current-day vocational education. We have some of our counterparts at Bristol Plymouth, Bristol Aggie, Tri-County, and a number of other schools, Diamond Regional, all building new high schools. We feel it's important to provide our students with those same benefits. We'd like to expand our Chapter 74 offerings in the areas of plumbing, HVAC, and dental assisting. These are in alignment with labor market needs. This will create additional opportunities for students, but further demands on our footprint. Demand for vocational education is at an all-time high. We have approximately 300-plus applications for 150 slots every school year. That's significant. There's less than a 50% chance of a student being accepted to Old Colony right now. Old Colony aspires to provide vocational training not only for our students during the school day, but we'd like to expand our offerings for adult education in the evenings. This is a quick overview of our maintenance effort. We've installed security doors, a 40-camera security system, access control system. We've retrofitted interior and exterior lighting. We've replaced overhead doors. We put on an addition to our welding shop in 1986. We've had upgrades to our septic system. In 1991, we had a roof project in approximately 2013, 2014. Our facilities department does a wonderful job of taking care of our facility. As a matter of fact, for incentive points, you can earn up to two additional incentive points. The average is about 1.25. We received 1.7 incentive points as part of our maintenance effort. That's a tip of the hat to Bob Souza and his staff. We recently had a grant-funded installation of new security doors through a security grant offered by the state. In 2019, our student lobby was redesigned through grant funding, and our students did all of this work that you see here. The lobby used to have a brick interior. It was redone. Carpentry, welding, built the soffit over the floor. Electrical did all the new lighting. Graphics did the design on the walls. It was a collaborative effort by everybody, but that was student-designed. We're extremely proud of that. Our space constraints are significant. Our electronics engineering classroom has no wall but houses two different groups of students at the same time. So, the juniors and the freshmen will be in that space at the same time. The sophomores and the seniors are in that space at the same time. Our machine and tool technology space is undersized and subpar. This is a snapshot of our floor plan as it compares to the state minimum recommendations. We are undersized in every area in our building. Continued issues are that our supply closets have been turned into offices for administrators and psychologists. Our athletic trainer uses a substandard room on the back of our substandard weight room to take care of our students. You can see the sinks in the top picture are leaking behind masonry and had to be disconnected. We have grease traps and fasteners that have rotted to a point where they no longer seal. Silicone is utilized to prevent water leakage. Our floor drains and culinary are blocked off. Several are inoperable. As a matter of fact, we snaked a few recently and pulled dirt out, which means the solution would be to jackhammer floors. These are our plumbing conditions. The water for the building is supplied by a single-bedrock well. We recently had some well work done because we had no option. There's no water redundancy at the building, and there's no fire protection. This is our water tank. This originally came out at the time we released our feasibility information. We're four years later. This is the original domestic water storage tank, and it's 50 years old. It needs to be replaced, but with a building project on the horizon, we'd like to wait and hope that this would be part of a new building project. Restrooms do not meet ADA accessibility and gender equity in terms of access to restrooms is an issue. Our gym floor is lifting and needs complete replacement. Our epoxy floors are separating in multiple areas throughout the building. Conc carpeting is beyond its useful life. Our HVAC systems do not allow for proper controls in accordance with our sophisticated equipment and have become an issue due to temperature and humidity. In our server room, we recently moved our servers online for both security issues, but also because we were using a portable AC unit to temper the air and dehumidify the space where our servers were located. Our asphalt and paving are in need of considerable repair. To remedy this would be preemptive, because, again, we've held off on several capital projects with the knowledge that to invest in those things at an early stage when we don't know the status of a building project would not be fiscally responsible. The existing conditions with regards to our aluminum double-pane windows are questionable. The seals are failing on several windows. Our energy costs are impacted. Our doors are original to the building. Hardware and threshold are an issue. Masonry walls are showing signs of age and cracking. You can see the splits on the brick, and this is an issue where water infiltration is certainly of concern. And our parking is insufficient, and we have drainage issues and accessibility issues in our parking lots. This is a map of our enrollment over the last, from 2022 when we started using this program to current day. And you can see the trends where we're up in the 300s for 150 slots. And realistically, when it came to evaluating the nature of this project, we wanted to be able to accommodate students, but not at the expense of our sending schools. And you'll learn more about how we came to a number and a decision around a number for potential enrollment as we move through the project. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Tina Stanislavsky from HMFH.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the design process and the current design. We started that with this educational visioning process, basically to understand and take a deep dive into the way they teach at Old Colony and how they hope to teach in the future. And we had a great group of people, students, parents, educators, all participate in this, to come to a set of goals that we would look for guidance from as we're designing the new school. So, you can read some of the educational goals here, as well as the facility goals. Minimize ongoing operational costs. Construction will not disrupt teaching and learning. You know, the school was to be a culture for learning and have a student-centered hub. So, all of these goals that came out of that would be weighed against all the different options to help select the right option. The MSBA also had us look at multiple different enrollment opportunities. So, they have 560-ish students right now in the school. And we looked at a 620 option that basically just brought it to a right size. So, they don't actually have enough academic space to support the amount of students they could have in the shops right now. So, they're really capped at the 560. We looked at a 728 population that would add just HVAC and plumbing. The next step would be 776 to add dental assisting. And then, finally, 810 would add biotech. And to Aaron's point, we also looked at it from an economic standpoint. Would the 810 be too much to ask of the sending communities? So, we ended up going with the 776. This is a chart that shows the different programs that are in the shops right now and the different clusters that they belong to. So, there's the business cluster, health, the service cluster, manufacturing and engineering, and construction. The existing school has the shops kind of scattered throughout, and they're not in their clusters. But the new building will bring these programs into their clusters so that they have a synergy of learning from their neighbors. This shows that we're adding the dental in the health and plumbing and HVAC to complete the construction cluster. We also had sustainability workshops, and the goal is to make this building very sustainable for the future, that it'll be energy efficient, that we will conserve water and our water resources and have redundancy, that we will reduce global warming and reduce the amount of embodied carbon, and that 50% of the building energy will be met by renewable energy sources to help keep the operational costs down. So, we provided all of the goals that we have come up with through the visioning process and all of the different options. We looked at a base repair, which basically just brings the building up to today's code, and that is really a baseline for you to understand how much work needs to go into this building. We looked at addition and renovation options, new construction on two different sites. And basically, this chart shows that the new construction on Site Two, or on Site Three, sorry, was the most appropriate. You may think addition and renovation might be less expensive, but because of the need to provide constant shop space for the students, it would have to be phased. So, you could build a new auto shop, and then you'd move those students into it, and then you could turn the auto shop into something else. But it would take a number of years to do that, and time equals money when you're constructing something. So, we ended up doing an operational cost analysis, and to go from the midsize option of 728 to 776 was really only a 2% increase in operational cost. So, to bring equity into the building, it was decided to not only complete the construction cluster, but to also add dental assisting. And again, we've always been very conscious of all the member communities and how much they are going to have to give for this project. So, we've tried to be as cost-effective as we can with every decision that we make. And so, the site is quite large, and it's beautiful, but there are some constraints in it. And so, we did a full study to determine where would the best place be to build this new building. There are many things that the MSBA doesn't reimburse for. Many things are ineligible. You'll hear that come up. Site costs get capped. So, we're very conscious about potentially not building on the fields, because then we would have to replace the fields, and the project would be more expensive. This is a diagram to show you some of the other constraints. The orange line is a gas line that runs through the site that we have to be careful of. There's a historic cemetery. The blue are some vernal pools and wetlands. So, when you look at where there's not a purple circle, there's not a lot of space to build easily. So, these are the three options that we studied. Number one is for addition and renovation. That's the place where you could actually expand the existing building. Number two would be to build on the fields, and you can see those costs are higher than the site option three, which is where we ended up deciding to build the new building. So, this is what the new building will look like when it's complete. It has a central hub and wings radiating off of that. And the site plan shows you, in red, is where the existing building is today. We're keeping the current access road off of North Ave the way it is today. You come in and you see the gazebo in front of you, but we're also adding a new access point further down on North Ave, because for safety reasons, it's always good to have two ways in and out of a site. You can see that. Number one is the main entrance. Hopefully, you can all see that. And number four and number three are the areas where we're putting the service-facing programs. So, that will be the culinary restaurant and the cosmetology. And number five is where the auto shops are. So, unlike today, where you have to wander around to try to find the programs, they'll be right out in front, and they'll have accessible parking right next to them. Number two is where the students will have an outdoor dining area and outdoor learning spaces. And number eight is where they'll have some outdoor athletic space off of the PE classes. Number six and seven are the combined workyards between the manufacturing cluster and the construction cluster. So, this is an axon of the completed building. We're looking to provide sloped roofs on a lot of the shops, and that will allow daylight to come in from up above, and that will reduce your energy costs, because, you know, you'll have the natural light and not have to put on so many lights. This is another perspective, looking from, if you were in the vernal pools, looking back, and this shows a lot of the classrooms that are adjacent to the shops. In the new building, the academic classrooms and the shops will be combined, so that there'll be sort of cross-pollination between the shops where the students do their hands-on learning and the academic classrooms. So, these floor plans show the layout. The arrows show the entrances. The main entrance in the front was, will be where the parents drop off, and in the back will be where the buses drop off. So, that'll be a safer situation on-site to keep those two separate. They'll come into the central hub, which will have the auditorium, the gymnasium, the new cafeteria, and upstairs, the media center. And then, the wings spiral off that, and they're, again, organized into those clusters. The manufacturing, which has machine and tool and automotive; the construction, which has the HVAC and plumbing; again, the service clusters facing forward; and then, on the second floor, the health clusters adjacent to the gym, and the graphics, computer science, engineering, and electronics. And this is a perspective of the new main entrance. Now, I'm going to turn it back to Walt.
Thank you. So, we're going to jump into a little bit of discussion about the project budget, but first, really talk about the MSBA and its funding capabilities. The MSBA funds a lot of projects throughout the Commonwealth. They are funded through one penny of the 6.5% state sales tax, and they give grants to districts all around the Commonwealth. They try to be equitable and give it money where it's needed. They evaluate on needs base. So, statement of interests are submitted by districts. They're selected into the MSBA program, and they move through that process that we showed early on with eligibility and forming of the team. That being said, the MSBA reimburses, so the district's given a base reimbursement rate. We'll get to that slide shortly. But as Tina mentioned, there are also cost caps and ineligible costs that the MSBA accounts for. So, the big one that we're going to discuss right here is the MSBA's construction cost cap. The, we know that the cost to build in Massachusetts right now is much higher than that $586 a square foot for building costs. It's probably somewhere closer in the $800 to $1,000 a square foot range, and we have some information to show that. But what the MSBA is trying to do is spread the wealth around so that more schools and more districts can have the opportunity to better their schools and their buildings. On top of that $586 of building costs, the MSBA allocates $59 a square foot for proposed site costs. So, that brings the total construction cost of eligible square footage of, and eligible cost to $645 a square foot. Our goal is to get as close to that number as we can, knowing that construction costs right now in Massachusetts are significantly higher than that. That being said, the MSBA does evaluate on a year-to-year basis their funding capabilities, and they did increase their level of funding to that $586 totaling $645 a square foot earlier this year, which are captured in the numbers that you'll see. This information right here is available on a daily basis at the MSBA website. This is a list of every single school that they have participated in back to 2009, and you'll see that costs have dramatically increased specifically over the last three to five years. The key things to note here are the green bar, the MSBA funding cost cap of eligible cost per square foot. You'll notice that the green bar is very rarely in line with projects. Some hit it, some are able to hit it, some are not. But what we want to point out here is that of the projects that are moving through... But the, what we want to point out here is that of the projects that are moving through the MSBA pipeline right now, Old Colony is targeting the most cost-effective and lowest cost per square foot of a building in the pipeline going to the board of directors in October. Some things to note about that, Old Colony is a vocational technical high school. Lexington, Hamilton, Wenham, and Littleton are all either high schools, elementary schools, or middle schools. The one note there is that Berkshire Hills is also a technical high school, but technical high schools are significantly more expensive. They require more space because of the shops versus the square footers that are required for standard classrooms. So on average, technical high schools do cost more, vocational high schools do cost more than standard costs. But Old Colony and through its building committee, through HMFH's design, are targeting a cost-effective solution for the member towns for the district. So what that looks like here, zoomed in, you can see out here, these are well above the six, five eighty-six a square foot. That doesn't incorporate the sixty, the fifty-nine dollars a square foot for the site. But Old Colony, at its submission to the MSBA for schematic design, landed at eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars a square foot. What's significant about that is that you'll see other technical high schools, even a few years ago, were targeting costs in the nine hundreds, schools that are targeting in the thousand dollars a square foot range. So we just want to show to everyone that the Old Colony School Building Committee, its designers, its OPM, are trying to push the cost down as significantly as we can, being responsible and making sure that Old Colony is capturing everything that it needs within that school. Getting to project costs, so that seven hundred and seventy-six student enrollment, the three additional shops, through the value management exercise, through the professional estimating exercise, through the reconciliation, landed at a total project cost of two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. PMA is able to extrapolate that into the MSBA budget and with the MSBA budget form, we are projecting and in negotiations with the MSBA for just under a hundred and thirty million dollar maximum district grant, leaving a district share of slightly over a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars to be split between the five member communities of the Old Colony School District. We are in negotiations with the MSBA. We need to have a project scope and budget agreement set up with them. We are taking our best guess and our most accurate guess to get to that, but that will be approved over the next, and recommended over the next few weeks to the board for an approval on October twenty-ninth, where we can lock in that district grant. This is the MSBA budget sheet as simplified as we can. The, you'll see the seven hundred and seventy-six enrollment, the two hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet. Over the next, the total project budget of two hundred and eighty-eight, what that looks like in construction only is two hundred and twenty-six million. The project budget right now is at a, and the project itself is at the schematic design level, meaning it's not fully designed. What that means for our estimators, for our designers, is that we need to carry contingencies to make sure that we're capturing the entire scope of the project budget in that two hundred and eighty-eight million. We are carrying almost seventeen million dollars in design and pricing contingency, meaning that we're going to have those, that year of design from November through, of twenty-five through November of twenty-six potentially, for the design to increase. So that just means that that seventeen million will be spread through here to make sure that design's fully captured. Right now, there's pieces that may be not captured, but we know that something needs to be there, so we have an analysis of that. We're also capturing costs for the midpoint of construction, escalation to the midpoint of construction. Our estimators estimate of record through HMFH, check estimate through PMA, sat in a room for, I believe, eight hours. They reconciled every one of these lines to within five percent, the total project budget to within, the total construction budget to within five percent. And they make sure that they're carrying the same scope, that we have the same detail in those estimates to make sure that we're in agreement when we submit to the MSBA. So this total project budget is representative of everything that this project needs to take itself to completion. One thing we want to make sure that we note here is that pending a successful vote and pending approval from the MSBA Board of Directors, this number right here is the number that can never be increased with the MSBA during our design submissions at design development, construction documents sixty percent, construction documents ninety percent. We have three more submissions to the MSBA where we'll have our professional estimators in that room. We will not leave that room with numbers higher than two eighty-eight. We will drive the price down, the cost down. We will make sure that we get that. We can't submit anything higher to the MSBA once that agreement's reached in October and once those documents are signed. So we need to be fiscally responsible to the district, to the member communities, and make sure that we are targeting something achievable, make sure we're targeting something that the district fits their educational program. And this is what the construction budget looks like. We're carrying contingencies within that budget for construction. We're carrying contingencies for the owner's costs. We're also carrying costs for furniture, technology, and equipment within the school. So everything is captured within that two hundred and eighty-eight million. Aaron mentioned earlier the base reimbursement rate. Old Colony's, when we began this project, Old Colony's base reimbursement rate over here was the fifty-four point one-six. We were anticipating potentially five point two-five in incentive points. The MSBA does reevaluate every year. It is locked for the year you enter into a project scope and budget agreement, which would be this year for Old Colony. The base reimbursement rate before incentives was increased, so we were able to capture almost three-quarters of a point of reimbursement on eligible costs there. Aaron mentioned that one point seven of maintenance. That is not only a testament to Bob Souza and his staff, but also the district and also the member communities that support Old Colony. It goes to show that the money that is being provided in the operating budget and the capital budget to take care of the items there are going a long way. The MSBA is recognizing that. So that one point seven is part of the incentive points. We're going to talk a little bit further about this four points right here with the energy efficiency of the schools. Tina mentioned it earlier, but we are targeting not only four percent of incentive, of base reimbursement points, but also some grants and fundings from IRA fundings and also from MassSave. I'll turn it over to Chad to talk about costs.
Thanks Walt. Chad Curtin, PMA Owner's Project Manager. So as part of this process, when we get to preferred schematic, so we start with forty-plus options. We narrow it down to the shortlist options here. So just to walk you through the graph, there's two shades, right? The bottom shade, the darker shade is the anticipated district share in each of those scenarios. So we do map that out across each of the scenarios. The reimbursement rates change, the eligible costs change, so we do have to map each one individually. The far left is the cost to repair. So the engineers do a thorough assessment of the existing building and then they provide that information to the cost estimators. We work up a phasing plan that gets us to completion with a fully renovated building that meets all current codes and standards. The challenge there with Old Colony is the building is way below MSBA and DUSI guidelines. The space is almost half of what MSBA and DUSI recommend for the number of students that they have in that building. Step number one with the MSBA is the ed plan. So in order to have reimbursement on any of these scenarios, we need to be able to demonstrate to the MSBA that the solution that's selected substantially meets the educational programming needs of the district. The base repair, because of the size of that building, is not going to meet the educational programming needs in the eyes of the MSBA. So they're not going to participate in funding of a base repair program. So that's why you don't see the lighter colored shading on the top of that, because it doesn't meet those districts' educational programming goals. All right, the next two bars here, the addition renovation bars, as you saw, actually some real-time data from Lexington High School, if you noticed the little blip on there, that is an addition renovation project. I think the common misconceptions of addition renovations are less expensive. When you get into a vocational school, it even multiplies the opposite because not only are you extending your construction with phasing, but now you have to build out temporary spaces to house each one of their vocational programs. With classrooms, nice and easy to put modulars up and have it be a classroom for a semester or two semesters, whatever it needs to be. When you're dealing with things like auto tech shops, culinary restaurants and kitchens, cosmetology studios, not as easy to outfit that in a temporary modular trailer. So those lend themselves to a longer construction duration, as you saw in Lexington also translates to higher costs. Moving into the new construction options, so the next bank here off to the right side. We had studied in depth five new construction options. One of them actually split out, so that's the gold one here. This is the selected preferred solution that the building committee eventually landed on. The reason that that one is broken out is decisions were made during the project scope and budget development at schematic design that triggered MassSave and IRA twenty-twenty-two rebates that survived the old BBBA amendments that just happened in July. So the big one there is ground source heat pumps. So ground source heat pumps and other design decisions led to an additional eleven million dollars of rebates and funding that would come off the district's bottom line. So that is why this number here, this hundred and forty-seven point nine, is different from a hundred and fifty-nine million dollar district share that you just saw on a couple slides prior to that. Another important thing to note here, so the, I mean, total project cost, obviously important, you want to get that cost as low as possible. We also want to make sure we're watching the district's bottom line. So I mean, when you really break it down, the cost to repair this building at a hundred and thirty-four point four million dollars would be compared to a cost of building a new building at a hundred and forty-seven point nine million dollars is what the district's bottom line would land at. The typical question that we get on this is, well, what if we just don't repair it? What's the do-nothing cost? The, it's a tricky one to answer. I mean, will that building survive another five years? Sure. Ten years? Maybe. Fifteen years? Probably pushing it. So at some point in the next fifty years, as the MSBA makes its design for a minimum fifty-year lifespan on any new building, generally they go much longer than that, but in the next fifty years, that building is going to incur whatever this costs, this is today's dollars. So whatever needs to happen to that building over the next fifty years, that is the scope captured in that line, in today's dollars. So if it happens ten years from now, then we're fighting that escalation curve that Walter showed a couple slides ago. Versus the rip-off-the-band-aid approach, which is where the building committee landed of saying, hey, let's not try to throw good money at bad. What is it going to cost to put a new building that's going to serve the needs of the district for fifty-plus years? And that's where they landed with that new construction option here with geothermal. So geothermal, it's a big piece of that. We saw the eleven million dollars there. So what is that and where is it coming from? As part of the systems assessment, we looked at dozens of different combinations. The shortlist is the five that you see up on the screen in the top left. So VRF is variable refrigerant system, ground source, air source. We looked at combinations of air source with gas-fired boilers, with solar. We looked at the same thing without solar. We ran it with IRA, without IRA, with MassSave, without MassSave, mapped all that out and then we took the utility costs, we put an escalator on the utility costs. We also factored in the cost of borrowing. So ground source, yes, is eligible, but you also have to borrow that cost, right? So if cost a little bit more upfront and you're paying interest on that, we mapped that in. We want to make sure that we're carrying all the variables in that system. So the chart that we landed on is here. The ground source is this kind of glowing green line on the bottom, so this maps out to fifty years and the lifecycle cost does show that ground source with those incentives, the payback is there. What does that system include that the building committee landed on? There is a one point two-five megawatt solar array in the base project scope. That covers about fifty percent of the electric demand on the building. We did look at doubling that to two and a half megawatts. There are a couple challenges with that. One, there isn't enough real estate on the roof, so we'd be looking at parking lot canopies. Parking lot canopies are obviously more expensive than putting them on the roof, so there's a cost associated with that. The other challenge is the, it's the infrastructure in the area. So we would definitely be thrown into an ISO New England load study and it could be years and years before they would even allow something like a two and a half megawatt system to come online. So it's still in consideration. We have three more design submissions. It's not completely out of the cards, but at this point, that is not in the project scope. I think the, the number to go to the full two and a half, which got you to basically a hundred percent renewables, was eleven million dollars. But then when you finance that at four percent over a thirty-year bond, it's eighteen million. So the payback wasn't there, at least not under how the incentives are currently written. Maybe that changes in the next year as we go through design. We'll keep it under consideration for sure. RTUs, energy recovery, pretty typical, so it just means that you're transferring some of that pool air in the summer, warm air in the winter through, it's called an NPOB wheel. And then for backup heat, they do have a eight hundred and fifty KW backup boiler in the event, just for redundancy in the systems. All right, so getting into the costs to each of the districts. So these numbers on the left, and we're going to jump back to that district share of a hundred and fifty-nine million. That's what the MSBA raw data shows, assuming you spend every dollar. Not the goal. MSBA grant of a hundred and, just shy of a hundred and thirty million dollars leads you to a district share of a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. The way the split works between the member communities and the regional agreement is that it's based on enrollment, how many students attend that school each year. So the principal and interest payment is recalculated annually based on the number of students that are attending from that sending community. Ninety percent of that is that year's enrollment in Old Colony and the other ten percent is the foundation enrollment, so the number of K through twelve students that are in that district. Mattapoisett, right there at six percent, you might ask, why is that so low? They only have thirty-something kids in the school versus a Cushnet who has almost two hundred. So that explains that delta there. So at this point, we have a schedule, we have a budget, we know what's eligible for reimbursement, what may not be eligible for reimbursement. So we're able to take that information and merge it all together and we can develop a cash flow projection. This is important because the district is not going to borrow two hundred and eighty-eight or a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars something they want. They only need to borrow what they need to support the cash flow. So we need to know at any point in time, what are their cash flow needs? The MSBA reimburses monthly, so we know what the MSBA's monthly reimbursements are. We can plot that out in a cumulative line here, the screen one, and then that leaves the balance here as being the district's out-of-pocket cost. So we take this information and you can see the first year of that, the project's in design, so the bulk of the debt service doesn't even hit until you really break construction. This information is provided to the district's financial advisors. In this case, it was Unibank. Unibank develops a bonding scenario. They say, here's market, here's when we would pull a ban, here's when we'd long-term bond based on what we note today at the market. So the assumption that they made was four percent over thirty years, the thirty years comes from the regional agreement. That information then can be used to calculate the annual principal and interest on the debt service. Annual principal and interest on the debt service is then split between the five member communities based upon the pie chart that we just saw a couple slides ago. Their share of that is spread out across their tax levy. So you can take their tax levy and you can extrapolate what percentage the principal and interest is of that tax levy and then you can apply that to, in this case, the residential tax rate and find out what the rate impact is. So we run the numbers both ways. So we run it on the new bill and then we also run it on the repair only, because that's important, is the option isn't do nothing. Something needs to happen in the next fifty years to that building. We just don't know what, or when, rather. We can break that down to the average single-family home. So in Lakeville's case, point of work here, five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is your average single-family assessment. We know what the rate impact is at that point, so seventy-nine cents for a new bill, there's sixty-seven cents for a repair scenario, and then we can pull the tax impact projections based on that. So a couple key points on this. This is run on the hundred and fifty-nine million dollar district share. This doesn't factor in the MassSave, IRA twenty-twenty-two, old BBBA rebates and incentives. It also doesn't factor in any savings whatsoever. This assumes you spent every single penny of your project and industry, which just historically is not the case and certainly not been PMAs experience in this immediate area or HMFH just for that matter. Bristol Plymouth, a couple miles away, we are the OPM and architect on that one. When we went in front of those seven member communities, the number they were looking at for a district share was a hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. The day that they opened up bids, we reran the numbers and all of a sudden they're looking at forty million dollars less. So you can imagine what forty million less looks like when you're talking interest and borrowing costs for that same amount of money. Similar results on Wareham. Their district share estimate was forty million. Final audit, they landed at twenty-five million. A final audit, they landed at twenty-five million, so another big savings. Uh, Easton, another one, twelve million dollar savings. So, I mean, time and time again, we're below those numbers, but when we're here today, we need to show you the worst-case scenario. So, we want to under-promise and over-deliver. Uh, right now, this is all in. The biggest variable in this is what the interest rates look like, and I think we got some promising news not long ago on that front. So, hopefully that four percent comes down, and it will, uh, will help improve these numbers. Uh, this information's all driven by DLR, uh, DLS data, uh, so the links are right down here. There is a tax impact calculator right on the project's website, oldcolonybuildingproject.com, and you'll see the calculator right in the header band. You can click which town you're in, uh, look up your assessed value, drop it right into, uh, the input, and it will spit out the estimated tax impact for your specific home or property. Uh, so, schedule the next steps. Uh, we have that schematic design, so we, we know what the project is, we know how big, we know what the cost is, we know what the schedule is, so now we're at that point where we have all the information to answer all the questions. That's why we're here tonight. Um, so, the critical community outreach window started a week or two ago. Um, we spent last weekend at the Acushnet Apple Peach Festival. We have a lot more events, I'll show you in a couple of slides. Um, but we are here to make ourselves available to answer any and all questions between now and the time of the vote on November eighteenth. Uh, as far as where to find information, uh, Facebook page is monitored and updated regularly, so recommend following along there. Uh, also that project website, every presentation, every meeting, it's all on the website. There's thousands, probably tens of thousands of pages of information. It's a lot to dig through. If you have any questions, there's a contact us link on there, too. Shoot us a message, and we'll tell you exactly where the information is and save you a lot of digging. Uh, but we have the information, so the answers are out there, you just have to know where to look for them. Uh, community outreach calendar, uh, over the next nine, ten weeks, uh, we are going to be all over the place. Uh, so, we just came from Acushnet, we had Apple Peach, we had a joint meeting last week, uh, with town leaders. Um, we have three community forums that are going to be held at the school, uh, in the evening. So, if you can't make one in your local town, head over to Old Colony, and there's three different events there for you to be able to attend. Or we'll be around, uh, all the weekend events. So, I mean, over in Lakeville, you can see us at the Lions Club Family Fall Festival on September thirteenth, and then again, Arts and Music Festival a couple of weeks after that. So, uh, our goal is to make ourselves available to answer any questions that anybody in your community might have. Project timeline, real quick. Uh, so, should the project be approved on November eighteenth? We'd go right into design. Design process with the MSBA takes about a year. We do have three more submissions to the MSBA. We need to demonstrate to each one of those submissions that we are, uh, on or under budget before they will allow us to move into the next phase of design. Then we go into bidding. Bidding takes two, three months. Uh, we hope to be in the grounds, uh, spring of twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, looking at around a two-year build, so that puts you in September twenty-twenty-nine occupancy, and then we move into abatement, demolition of the existing building, finish the parking lots to go under that, wrapped up by the end of twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, that concludes what we had for our presentation, but, uh, the team is happy to answer any questions that committees may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for that very thoughtful and thorough presentation. Um, it was very well put together. I'm, I'm surprised there's not more people here tonight. We were obviously expecting a lot more people. Um, I think, once they watch this video, there's probably going to be some more attendance at some further events, um, but we'll be getting the word out to people more and more through our venues, um, and our, uh, Facebook and, and website, and any type of community events that we have. Um, I had a question now, that I know the answer, that most of the people might not know, um, and who would like to speak to the, um, the process in here for the election warrant and the vote? Andrew, would you like to speak to it, or Aaron, would you like to speak to it?
We have a problem with pressing over to either Andy or Chad.
Chad, you can start.
Sure. Um, so, the, uh, the form of vote is dictated by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-one, Section Sixteen. Um, and the, there are two options in that. One of them is the school committee says, hey, we're moving forward with the project, and the five member communities have ninety days maybe to, uh, disapprove that vote. You have to call a town meeting, and then you actually have to vote to stop it. So, um, if you don't call a town meeting, the project moves forward by default, uh, if none of the towns object. The other option is the school committee can say, hey, we're not going to vote to approve the project, we're going to vote to put it to the voters. That's what they decided. Uh, so, that decision happened in February of this year. Uh, we've been engaged with, uh, town clerks, town leaders, uh, to make sure everyone was ready for that. We selected November eighteenth as the date. Uh, Tuesdays in November are a, uh, very familiar voting time, and then the time that was selected, twelve PM to eight PM, affords almost everybody an opportunity to get over to the ballot. So, we want, as much voter turnout, we want to hear from the member communities as best we can. Um, the election warrant, so a draft, uh, the final was actually, uh, just provided by Old Colony. Um, so, that lists the total project budget, um, and then some draft debt exclusion language should each town, so that's a town decision, town by town, but I think all five member towns are probably going to move in that direction, uh, was also provided. And again, it just says, do you approve the project, yes or no, essentially, and that's all, um, standard language that's required by the MSBA. Anything on this?
The only, the only thing to miss is, it, what if there is a no vote?
Can I just speak a little bit, too?
Sure.
So, we had a choice between what they call a sixteen N or a sixteen D option. One option. Thank you.
One, uh, we had a choice between a sixteen N or a sixteen D option. Um, the two options are very different. One option allows you to go in a, with a town-by-town vote, and if one town votes down the project, the project basically, um, goes back to the alternative format, which is an aggregate vote. Unfortunately, what will happen is, when you go back to that aggregate, you have a lapse in time. That lapse in time, we estimated, would result in an eight million dollar increase for the member towns. Eight point four-three million doll- eight point four-three million dollar increase. What we decided was, instead of going with a situation where a town could vote it down and you're tacking on eight point four-three million dollars, and then essentially making the folks who said no feel like they were devalued because you have to go back to the other mechanism for a vote, we just said, we're going a mechanism two out of the gate, and if it's a no, it's a no, if it's a yes, it's a yes. But that's an aggregate format. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And what that means is, it's the aggregate of all five towns together. If fifty-one percent of the voters approve it, then the project passes. If fifty-one percent of the voters disapprove it, the project does not pass. And so, the recommendation that came before the building committee was, don't make anybody feel devalued and simultaneously tack on eight point four-three million dollars, go with the aggregate out of the gate, and what, and you get what you get. Uh, the other thing is, is that if a vote fails, and for some reason, the school decided they wanted to go back and try again, the MSBA does not cover the cost of feasibility. And that's a really important piece for people to understand, is we've just invested as a community, or as a set of communities, and as a regional school district, a million dollars in feasibility. So, we wanted to be as thoughtful as possible in the way we move forward, because obviously, as Chad said, whether it's fifteen years from now at a highly escalated rate, or now, we need a new, we need a new Old Colony, or we need to do some serious work with Old Colony, and this seemed to be the best decision. Is that helpful?
That is very helpful.
Okay.
Um, anything you'd like to add, Andrew?
Yeah, we can discuss tonight, um, on the debt exclusion part of it. I don't want to necessarily take a vote, um, but that's a critical part that we have to discuss, what we want to do.
Okay. Great. I'm going to open it up for questions for the board, um, and that means both the select board and the FinCom, and then I will open up to questions to the audience after, um, and how we'll do this for the audience. Audience member will come up to the lectern, ask their questions, step away, and let the appropriate person answer it, so we can kind of come up with a little bit of a cadence. I'm actually going to start over here to my right, um, because Member Plonka was on the committee, and I, I'd like him to have any comments or questions after this presentation.
Um, I just want to say, it, it's, it's been an honor and a privilege to be on this committee for the past two, three years, four? Whatever. I don't know how long it's been. Um, and again, an honor, uh, most importantly, to represent, uh, the Lakeville, residents of Lakeville, as well as the select board. Um, since I've been actively involved, I don't have any questions at this time, I'm pretty familiar with it, so, but again, thank you.
Any other members of the Finance Committee or Select Board have questions that were not answered?
I guess I would just ask, let's say fifty-one percent vote against it, then what? What's the next step?
Then we have to entertain what some of our capital expenses are going to be in the short term for certain, or whether or not we revisit this, uh, without the MSBA reimbursement for feasibility, but you go back to square one, and Walt, uh, forgive me if I'm missing something.
Want to jump in? I don't know, I think you pretty much covered it. The, uh, the one thing I will add, the MSBA does have a failed vote policy, sorry, on their website. Um, there is an option to go back and, and re-vote. If there's something, I, I don't know, it was a snowstorm that happens on November eighteenth, hopefully that's not the case, I might move if it is. Um, but, uh, some extenuating circumstance, or if there's maybe a component of the project that just, that was the reason the project failed, we would have to demonstrate to the MSBA, hey, we know why it failed, this is why we want to go again, do we have your permission? Um, that's basically what the failed vote policy reads.
Any other members? I'm going to open it up to the audience. Anyone wants, raise their hand.
Uh, first thing I want to say is that, uh, I know Old Colony very, very well as our superintendent and the school committee, and, you know, they have done a tremendous job, you know, over the years with the resources and the staffing and everything, and, uh, unfortunately, they, they maintain the schools so well, you know, everybody goes into the school and say, wow, what a great-looking place, but, you know, it needs a lot of improvements and a lot of things, but thank you very much for many, many, many years of service. Um, I have a lot of questions on the, the project itself, but I'm probably not going to get into that. But my concern is, is that, you know, um, I think, uh, Chad, who I know very well, too, uh, from other projects that he's been on, that, um, you know, if it goes fifty-one percent means that fifty-one percent of all the population from the five towns, so, you know, we get twenty-five percent of the students, Acushnet's got thirty, I believe, I can't remember what the other ones are. So, it can pass by the fifty-one percent, even though one town may vote it down or not, okay? So, it's an aggregate of, of the whole thing. What concerns me is, is that, um, you know, how are you going to pay for it? Is the concern. Because if it passes, we definitely need an override. This project, and Aaron and I talked about this about three years ago, that, you know, this cost of thirty-nine million for the town of Lakeville is all of our projects put together, for all our school projects, the police station, the COA, you know, the library, didn't come up to that amount of money. And when we did our school proj- when we did all of our projects, we asked, asked for an override for each one of those projects before we went ahead, you know, with the projects because it was so important. This number is staggering, you know, for the town of Lakeville, I'm not just saying us, I'm talking about the other towns as well, I'm not so bad for Mattapoisett, I'm sure of Mattapoisett, to be honest with you. But, uh, so, I mean, if this override fails, okay, then the situation is, it's going to cost one point five million dollars a year for the next thirty years for the town of Lakeville, which is going to come out of your operating budgets. We can't do that, that's impossible for us to do. So, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, the override for this project ought to be on the same day as the, uh, the approval of the project.
And that's what Andrew was alluding to, and we'll have that discussion today to do, as well.
Right. The problem that you have now is you don't have enough time, you know, to do it, to get everything, the town clerk, and the election, and so forth and so on, even if you vote it. I don't think there's enough time to do it. And the reason why I'm saying that is because people are going to go, go vote for the project, okay, on the ballot, for the project itself. I would say it's going to pass, okay? Because everybody's saying, oh, this is, it's a great project, you know? It's, needs, it needs to be done. But the problem is that the people that are represented that don't support the project, or don't support the tax increase right now, have to do it at a later date. I mean, I don't know what Rochester's going to do, surely, but, you know, that's a serious problem. Because if it passes fifty-one percent, and we don't pass an override, we're in big trouble. I mean, it happened at Bristol Plymouth, you know, as well. But they had to go back and, and vote up, because they had no choice, because they had to pay for it, then, you know, whatever. I, I know it did, but still, you know, they voted it down, you know, initially. So, that, that's my main concern. I mean, there's a number of questions on the project itself, which I won't get into today. But, like you said, Chairman, we got six people back there, and the reason why is because it was on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen as of Friday. Most people don't look at the agenda for the Board of Selectmen, so people weren't aware that this presentation was going to be done.
So, we did do some outreach as well, and we had it on, at, at different areas, but I didn't get any engagement on anything for any social media. It, I, fifty people clicked on it, no one even opened it up, it was very-
That's a major problem. I think they got a lot of work to do. They got a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing is, you're assuming everybody's on Facebook. I'm not on Facebook, you know? I get a number of people on, on Facebook, so, that's, that's an issue. Oh, you are, me, right. She's the chairman.
Yeah. No, I appreciate your, um, your thoughts on that. You also bring up a good point, uh, on the budget, because the budget for the project after it's completed, the operation budget increases, too. So, it's twofold. It's not just the cost of the project.
Yeah, that could be significant.
Yeah. It, it, it's the cost of the operation budget after.
I'd have to tell you, I'd have to tell you guys, you know, the state's funding is drying up, or it already has dried up, you know? They're not giving out about as much money, and you know that, you know, too, Aaron, as well. So, that's a serious problem, and you know, right now, you've got a budget problem for twenty-six.
We absolutely do.
A big budget problem, twenty-six. You know, what are you going to do with that? You know, you have the fire station, you know, it's, that project's been approved, so you're going to have fire station project, you're going to have Old Colony's project, you're probably going to have to have a general override now to balance the budget and fiscal twenty-six. Taxpayers are saying, whoa, 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 hold on a second, you know, this is going to cost us a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Wait. No.
[laughing].
We work together and talk to each other every day, so I asked him if I could jump in real quick. Just to address some of what, uh, Mr. LaCamera mentioned, I want to extend an invitation. We will come back as frequently as you need us to, as long as our schedule allows, so that folks can hear from us. So, please know that we extend that olive branch of transparency, because we don't want people to feel like they can't ask questions, or that they missed a, a meeting. This isn't a one-time thing. We have three, um, information sessions happening at Old Colony as well, so people could come to Old Colony, but we want to be an open book. We know that this is a large ask. Uh, four years ago, in a meeting, uh, Rich said to me, Aaron, it's going to be a hundred million dollars. I said, Rich, it's going to be way more than a hundred million dollars when the nu- by the time we get there, because honesty's important, transparency's important. And he smiled, and he said, you know what? I appreciate that you could be that forthcoming about it, but it was no mystery, he was being generous, and we were just saying, we have no idea what the number is. Um, but our, our fiduciary responsibility is to answer as many questions. That's why when we supply, supply our annual budget to you, it's line by line, so that you can truly break it down and have a deep understanding of where we come from. And that's from Sarah Griffith, our business manager, who's here tonight, too, and deserves a little, um, pat on the back as well for her work. a little pat on the back as well for her work. But I just wanted to share that, I think it's really important for people to know, we're not hiding behind anything. There were recommendations made relative to a post on Facebook just recently, we rewrote the post to meet the needs of the people who actually made the recommendations, because they were good recommendations. So if you have questions, our job is to answer those questions for you, and we're here to do that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
The issue of the operating budget has come up a couple of times tonight, it's a very, very important issue. If this plan fails, if the vote fails, that operating budget for Old Colony, at least as far as I can see, is going to shoot up significantly, because there's been a significant amount of delayed maintenance. You only have to drive in the only driveway into Old Colony, but you better stay to the right, because if you go to the left, there's a big dip. And that, and a lot of other asphalt issues and school building issues, need to be addressed, because they've been put off for a considerable length of time, because we've been asked by, you know, FinComs and Select Boards in the past, to go easy with the budget, and we have. I think everybody in the room pretty much has told us that, each Board, that is, and if the vote fails, we lose the opportunity for 60.5% or 0.49, something like that, of state money. That's gone if we don't go this route. The operating budget is not going to just sit flat, because there are issues that need to be addressed. You talk about the boys' room, the men's, the ladies' room, and so forth, and, you know, brick, and, you know, traps that-
There's the visuals in the list online.
Right. All this stuff is online, you can see these pictures, and see the long list of things that need to be addressed now. So if it fails, we lose, we have to pay for everything ourselves. And plus, one other thing I think is important to recognize, there have been many new vocational schools built in our area, Bristol Plymouth, Diamond, Upper Cape, Tri-County, a number of. Our kids who go to Old Colony presently, in my view, are a little bit behind in terms of their opportunity to learn in a modern technology environment. And I think, I know times are tough, times are always tough, but I think we owe these kids an opportunity to work and learn in a, in an environment that is large enough. There isn't a room in the building, a classroom or a shop, that meets state standards. There's one that's one square foot short, and all the rest of them, they're all below the standard. These things I think we need to consider, absolutely. Funding and money, that's all important, no question about it. But I think the project has been done in such a way as to try to keep those costs down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
I have two things.
All right, take it away.
So we have 35 days to alert the town clerk before an election, so we have enough time, I think, to have that conversation. The other one is probably a question for Aaron. The new watery system for vote schools, is that going to, like, give us a definite what a yearly bill would look like, potentially?
Chad may actually have some specs on the water system, if we don't have him with us tonight, we can certainly-
Lottery.
Oh, did you say lottery or water?
Lottery.
Because we also don't have water redundancy or fire protection, so I thought you said water, forgive me.
That's another question I have too, is when is that scheduled?
We're looking to tie in the Middleborough for town water, that's a hope, because right now, we're relying on that singular well. Once we have numbers mapped out, hopefully that will become a part of the project. If, obviously, if that, that needs to happen no matter what, because again, we need redundancy and fire protection. The lottery piece is new, so for families who are not aware, historically, students would apply to Old Colony, and it would be an admissions-based program, and they'd be admitted based on five different criteria. The most heavily weighted criteria is attendance, because in the workforce, if you don't show up, people don't want to hire you. So we put a high emphasis on attendance, it was 30 points for the students. The next piece was their academic record, discipline, guidance counselor recommendation, and interview. So those five criteria used to be the criteria by which we evaluated a student's application. Effective immediately, the state has stated that we can only use lottery. So we will be moving to a lottery-based system, and the discussions taking place very soon will be around how that lottery may impact our municipalities, because if it's a random draw, you never know how many kids are coming out of the hat, so to speak, the proverbial hat. If it's a town-by-town based on a three-year average, it's a little bit more easy to anticipate what numbers would look like. But know that historically, in my decade as the superintendent, on October 1st, I always call the town administrator, and I say, your number has fluctuated by X amount. If it's any more than 10, or in Rochester, eight, one year, because Shirley said, you know, even though it's eight, there's going to be a big impact. So that year, we actually called the town administrator, and we let them know it was eight. But typically, if it's more than 10, what I'll do is I'll call the town administrator and say, just so you know, for forecasting purposes, your enrollment has fluctuated by 10 or more, this is the amount, and it allows someone to plan appropriately moving forward. That will still happen, but we would see trends, historically through admissions, where certain towns would be within a ballpark of, let's say, five to six students. The lottery becomes somewhat unpredictable, there's some bonuses there, because kids who might not get in and could benefit have an opportunity. There's also some downfalls with regards to predictability from municipalities. So we're considering a three-year average from your previous three years of enrollment, which would be the first step in a cap, just so people know where our thought process is. We don't know whether that will be approved by the state or not, because it puts limitations on accessibility via lottery. But if it is accepted, then what would happen is, we take the three-year average, we draw a lottery, town by town. If a student decided not to attend, the next student from that town would fill, until we've exhausted a particular list. And then, if we had, let's say, a town who had no further applicants, we'd move to the lowest represented town, which allows them to build their average. Again, this is a process that we have to work through, it would be a pilot process, perhaps a single-year pilot. We'd run, we'd run the outcome by our member towns to see how they felt about it, following the pilot. But we've always been collaborative in nature, we want stakeholder input, but we're doing our best to troubleshoot this. There's a repository that all the superintendents from all the 29 vocational schools have created, so we can kind of troubleshoot and brainstorm around how we might approach the lottery system. But it is new.
And the only other question I had, you've given a good answer in the past on this, but if the school was to pass, there's going to be about 200 more kids, I think, correct? What is like the, how would you bring them on?
The plan for integration?
Yeah.
So it'd be a four-year integration. Lakeville is very familiar with the Freetown departure, and so what you saw over the course of a four-year period was a departure of 25 students a year from Freetown, approximately, it could have been 22, 25. But as students graduated, we did not backfill those classes, we filled those classes with our member towns. Is everyone with me so far? What you'd see for the introduction of a 200-student increase is about a 48-student-a-year increase, shared by each member town. Does that make sense? So plumbing might have 16 students, HVAC might have 16 students, dental assisting might have 16 students, give or take, because we also have additions to electrical, and I believe it's culinary, built into these numbers. But give or take, I'm just using those as easy numbers to understand. And then what you'd do is, you'd have an integration model of 48 per year, and that would, again, would be shared amongst the towns, so that it's not overwhelming. But what I would propose, should a building vote be successful, is that those draws should be random, to reestablish interest. I worked at Hopkinton High School years ago, in an administrative capacity, and I'll tell you that when we built a new building, interest increased, it actually skyrocketed. And what happened was, a lot of students left the private schools to come back to Hopkinton. Hopkinton is now a premier educational district in the state of Massachusetts. They're, year after year, they're a top-five academic performer. But I can tell you that by building a new school, the interest skyrocketed. Remember, we have 300-plus applications for 150 slots right now, and we, my son calls it a Brady Bunch building. So, you know, I know Bob said that there are deficiencies, but I will challenge anyone to walk in and not feel loved, know that it's a warm environment, know that their child is well taken care of, and know that every staff member loves and cares about, and is passionate about the work that they do. So what we don't have in terms of facility, we make up for in terms of our delivery, and I never want that to fall short, because I don't want anyone to think they're not going to get a quality outcome when they come to Old Colony. I consider us one of the premier vocational schools in the state. This will only raise our game. And I'm very excited and proud to think that this could happen. My son's a freshman at Bristol Plymouth, and I'll tell you a quick story. I was dropping him off for his first day of school, and I was pulling out of the parking lot, and I saw the Bristol Plymouth building being built. And I happened to get on the phone to call Chad, because I just had to talk to him about an issue for a meeting that day. And he said, where are you? He said, I was like, you're in the car. I said, I just dropped my son off at Bristol Plymouth. He said, I'm here, come to the trailer, I'll take you on a tour. And I walked into Bristol Plymouth, and my eyes started to water, because, A, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm proud of what was built, its quality, and my son gets to be a part of it. And B, that could be us. That could be five member towns who have a, who have a destination, not only for kids, but for adult ed, for our seniors who come and eat at Old Colony all the time, if you come to the Cougar's Den, you will see them, for cosmetology, for an outdoor mall set up, where people don't have to walk through a building anymore, they actually have a destination location, where they can be a part of a community. It's overwhelming. In the last four, like Chris said, the last four years of my life, maybe more than that, because we started this SOI process as far back as 19, has been dedicated to this, my heart and soul is in it, and I think it's what our kids deserve and need, and I know it's a big ask. I'm very well aware. But I'm filled with pride, I'm appreciative of the time, and we will be wherever you need us to be, to deliver a message. So thank you for the opportunity, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. So I'm very appreciative of all the words that were said here today. This project is obviously very well thought out and well talked about. I'm in a unique position. I have two girls, and they've both gone to, through both school systems. I have a daughter that's currently in a ponequit, and I had a daughter go through Old Colony. And both school systems are excellent, they both offer different things. We're very fortunate in order for us to be able to send our children to such quality schools. And it's a sad fact in life that things break, and buildings get older, and things need to move on, and this is the most expensive time that anyone could ever conceive of. I don't think 15 years ago, we could have sat down and said, oh, you know, it's just, it's $159 million, it's just, those aren't terms that we would have thought about just 10, 15 years ago. So understanding we're already in a adverse budget position, because things have skyrocketed, and that would be all costs for everything that happens to all people in town, and especially to municipalities as we are constrained. So all conversations that we, we know, this is your budget, this is your livelihood, this is, taxes are very personal for people. And I'm very appreciative of what these asks are, and what they will be in the future of the town, to remain competitive and have wonderful places for our children to learn and be part of the community, and grow up, and be set for success. I feel both my girls, they took different paths, but because they went through the school systems here in Lakeville and over in Old Colony, they are set up for those successes, and I want that for future generations. So that's just my little speech. Andrew, do we have anything else as part of the presentation, or do we want to move on and have some conversation about when should we schedule the vote?
Yeah, we can talk about that, just one informational, Old Colony is covering the election, correct? Up to 10,000? Just small detail.
So we've budgeted to cover the elections in each town. Basically, when we had our meeting on September 3rd, I told all of our TAs, just send us the bill. That's an important piece of our planning process, so, yes, we're covering that, that piece, which is for the Old Colony building. The debt exclusion is different, so if you choose to do the debt exclusion at the same time as Old Colony, the debt exclusion falls under the supervision of the town, and that's not covered by Old Colony. So they are two separate pieces, they cannot be on the same ballot, is my understanding, just for clarity. But they can be at the same time, they just cannot be at the same, on the same ballot.
Same ballot or same ballot question?
They can't be the same ballot question, well, same ballot, I think, but we can get clarity.
You would get two different ballots when you walk in.
Right, two ballots, basically, is the answer.
Thank you.
But any clarity you need, we can also run, we can run questions by bond counsel. Rick Manley has been wonderful, so when we had questions recently, you know, Andrew sent us a question, I think Rick answered us within probably an hour. He was excellent. So we've been very lucky in terms of our communication. But any questions, we can answer for you. If we don't have the answers, we'll find them for you. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Sure, of course.
Okay, so you talked about the lottery process. If the numbers change for the town, does that mean our budget is changing?
It does.
Okay, so that's important, I think, to sort of snapshot.
Sure. Do you want me to clarify that? Just a quick explanation of how that works? So from a capital, any capital expense is part of the budgeting process, and what will happen is, your budget is based on 90% of your Old Colony enrollment, and 10% of your K-12, and that's done annually, and that kind of goes back, or not kind of, that does go back to the rationale for a phone call on October 1st. Once we know what the October 1st numbers are, we're able to call and say, here's what your delta was, right? So it gives you an idea of how the capital could fluctuate. It's another reason why the lottery was a concern to me, because I don't want to see big dips or big jumps. For any town, I'm sure towns don't mind the dips, but they do mind the jumps. And if one person dips, it means another person jumps. Does that make sense? So what we were talking about, when we talked about a three-year average with a lottery being used for a draw, and we need to make sure that that's acceptable for, from the Department of Ed, we're not 100% sure it is, but that allows us, again, that predictability around what could be forthcoming. If we are looking at the integration over a four-year period of classes of 48, those dips and jumps won't be so dramatic that they wouldn't be manageable or forecastable. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, I think that concludes the presentation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time. All right. So what are our options, Andrew, for what we need to schedule?
I didn't want to necessarily have the vote tonight, but it's something-
For next meeting?
Probably next meeting, which would be September 16th.
Yep.
So I think that's a good time to come back and have that discussion.
Okay. Good clarification on the two ballots, I was just thinking, it couldn't be the same question. That was good to know. Do we have anything else on the agenda tonight? Nothing else on the agenda tonight, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:31.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, roll call?
Pluck eye.
Candido eye.
Carbonee eye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I expect the minutes on my desk to last.
Sam?